So without any further ado, let's kind of get into that. November 6th is the election date, so real quick, just kind of history lesson on what got us to this point. You know, I grew up here my whole life, so the picture of the farms very much reflected back then. It was a farming community, rural community around this area. And in 1970, the voters and the city leaders at the time put together initiative to incorporate the city, which happened at that time, they also voted and approved the charter. If you think of the charter, the charter is basically kind of our governance rules or kind of our bible, what we run by, how we follow. And at the time that was created, an important point too is that even though we're 36 square miles, they set the millage levy at 10 mills. So 36 square miles compared to some other communities, there are some today same geographic size like Livonia and others who can levy up to 20, but at the time that was appropriate, so it worked. So even though this bullet point down here says we're at 9.4063, there was a headly rollback initiative at the state legislature that happened, so we really will never get beyond or close to the 10 mills again. So back in, as we started to evolve as a city and started to grow and picked up more business and jobs, we went from having the Wayne County Sheriff patrol our roads, which Mr. Wadsworth knows very well, he was part of that force, to transitioning into 81, which we needed to have our own full-time police department. So we transitioned to full-time, our own department then. Same change with the fire service. In the old days, we had volunteer, and then volunteer turned to pay on call, right John? And then we turned into full-time in 99, and we still have the Station 4 on Eureka Road over by Blocks, that basically is our one full-time station, that happened in 99. And the bottom point's important because a lot of communities, when they start departments like that or different initiatives, even recreation programs or others, they attach some type of funding to them. And it wasn't, so it was, we were able to do that out of the general fund, and it worked out fine, but that's an important point as we move forward. Here we are in 2018, we have all these departments, I'm not going to dive into the details of them, but this isn't just about public safety is my point tonight. Everything that we're going to talk about is dedicated funding for the fire and police services, but all these will be impacted as you hear us talk tonight about the general fund. That general fund budget that I present to city council as our check and balance is 22.4 million. That encompasses all of those services, including this big piece, which is the public safety piece, so 13.2 million of that, or almost 60% is of the general fund, is going to public safety. That is a concern, that's a large portion. If you look at most communities, they're operating much less portion on public safety, because remember, nobody's fault, they never dedicated any funding for that. So real quick, just where does the city get its money? Where do we get our revenue? Some people get us mixed up with school revenue and state revenue and county and others. This is basically where we get our money to provide these services. Property tax or land, right? Residential land, commercial land, industrial land. The tax revenue that comes from that is where we get the biggest portion of our revenue to provide the services. So 40% of it, and we talked in the next slide, you'll see why it made such a big impact. The second piece is called this thing called state shared revenue, or what I like to call, it was a promise made by the state. Remember, we had a sales tax of 4%, we had sales tax of 4%, the state said, hey, a lot of communities were starting to put their own taxation in. So basically, the state said, look, we'll take care of it. We're going to raise the tax to 6% from 4%, and we're going to share back. It was a promise that was made to all communities, not just Romulans. All communities were going to get a piece of that, shared back in revenue sharing. And so I'll show you what happened, but 14%, so the biggest piece here, next biggest piece, fines and forfeitures is a group of, from anything from violations, things that go through 34th District Court, they could be building code violations, tickets, speeding tickets, anything that's a violation, organs violations. So again, those are the largest pieces that we get as far as revenue, and that makes up a big piece of the pie of our overall budget for revenue. So I know we all remember what happened in 2008. And what this chart shows is that number one revenue generator that we talked about in the previous slide, which is the real property tax, land tax. So this shows 2008, and this shows up to, here we are, in this range. And this drastic drop, it was called a recession, right? Bottom fell out. I mean, we went through horrible times, everybody did, the business world did, the schools did, everybody struggled. But a huge drop from here down to, it finally bottomed out really just a couple of years ago. So I came in office here, continued to bottom out, and that's a combination of all the properties. So now, as we're trying to move forward, the issue that we have is this. You remember, we hear talk about how we're capped in how our taxes can go up. So it's good as a taxpayer, because your taxes can't just skyrocket. They can go up as much as from 5% or inflation, and then they're capped. So the problem we have, this drastic drop, and what I often hear from residents is, well, hey, Brooke Croft, you know, things are going well, the economy's doing well, we got jobs coming in, you know, we got Amazon, we got Mopar, you know, we're going to be good, right? And I'm like, no. That's what this bullet point says. If we do nothing, it's going to take us till 2041 just to get back to where we were in '08, because we're capped. So it's going to slowly, yeah, if things keep going well, it'll slowly inch up. That's not a sol. And so that's why we're here to talk about, you know, how we need the residents to help us with that sol. This is kind of a comparison chart of many different neighborhoods and kind of an average for the whole city on residential profit. And when I often talk to people, and I'll say, hey, you've owned property, the same property for 10 or more years, and I fall into that category, and I know some do, Sheldon, you do, and Bill and others, that if you look at what the property situation was overall, in 2008, the average home, just aggregate average, is 58,000, and we paid about $547 as average for a homeowner. Today, in 2018, the average home, because of that big drop we saw in that chart, is down at 38,000, and the residents are paying about $360 apiece. So when I ask them, are they paying more today, less today, or about the same today 10 years ago, a lot of people assume they're paying more. They think, well, gosh, I must be paying more, everything goes up, right? No, it does not, because it all relates back to the taxable value. And this is showing some of the different neighborhoods, because they are uniques in our community, that's what I love about our community. There's some newer development, you see, you know, gateways, some newer homes, a little higher, but still, the impact is huge. So if anybody that had their home for that long a timeframe, I guarantee you they are paying less. So what does that mean to us? Less revenue. I mean, so we're doing, you know, more with less, because those values are down. Now, the homeowner could say, well, their values are down too, and yeah, that's true. So those will creep up, but there's a huge gap in where those dollars come from that we fund these services. The average, about $186 less, that's important, because later we'll talk about the sol, and it kind of balances that out. The second piece that I talked about, so we talked about the property, the land tax, now we're talking about this revenue sharing, this promise that the state made to us, that said, we'll take care of you, all you communities, not just Romulans. So this isn't, you know, these aren't my numbers, this came from savemichigan.cities.org. They work with Michigan Municipal League and some other third parties to go around the state, and they actually had a campaign called Save Our Cities. We hosted one at the Rad, because this number for us, since '02, we're down $9.4 million. State didn't give us, 9.4. Imagine Director Kraus would be doing 9.4 million dollars. That's a huge number. You look at Westland and some others, it's 20-some million. I mean, not just Romulans, states held back. So, you know, are we trying to fight back, are we asking for more of it? Absolutely, we're at Lansing asking, it's not going very well. In fact, a lot of the newer legislators, because of term limits, don't even know it's been that big of an issue. I just had a conversation with a new elected rep, and I said, what's the number one thing I can help you with? I said, revenue sharing, you're killing us. And you know what he said? What problem with revenue sharing? He said, well, it went up a little bit from last year, you should be okay. I'm like, last year, where were you in '02? Where were you, I mean, you know, we're way off the mark, so they don't even know what they don't know. And so they balanced our budget on our backs. Here's the, what we call the general fund, and this general fund that I've referred to already that funds all these services, and the next term called fund balance, the best analogy I can use is what we have, is it's a savings account, this piggy bank. So these dollars here, what we have is basically, we have to have, really by law, we get audited every year by a third party, Platte Rand comes in, looks at the books, they go before city council, they say, look, we're looking at this, 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 and this, and they tell us that as a community, general rule, we should have about 20 to 25% of our expenditures in a savings account, a rainy day fund, whatever you call it. So think about your home budget, right? You've got your income at home, you've got your bills at home. And then you hopefully have something, so if there's a little timeframe or gap, you can keep your lights on, your gas on, your food on the table. And so as a city, it's just a bigger scale, we have to do the same thing. God forbid something happens, we've got to be able to pay police and fire, or DPW, and keep, you know, the city open and operating. So here's, you know, the cold hard truth that I have to tell you, and this is why I'm compelled to be out here. I first started doing this, and people are like, Brooke Croft, you don't want to go out and start talking about taxes, that's not a popular thing politically, that'll kill you. No, I have to. The way I view it is, you guys hired me to do a job. And if I don't tell you the truth, and if I don't tell you what's coming, shame on me. And because that would be irresponsible to say, yeah, everything's good, we got Amazon, don't worry about it. Look what's happened to general fund. Here's the green, the fund balance, that rainy day account, it's dwindling. Look at, if we get out to 2020, we got a problem. That's not good. So we've got to fix this, the property values aren't going to come up for a long time. We're fighting for revenue sharing to get that fixed, but we can't keep eroding that. Okay, we can't keep eroding that. So that's a problem, so let's move on, talk about what things we have done, and we've worked on solutions, we're going to continue to do them, here's some. And this is before me, some of these things have been going on. Citywide reduction in staff, that's been going on since '09, '10, '11. Here's some facts, we're working with 49 less full-time than people. I mean, I don't know if we have 49 in this room. You think about 49 less people that were productive people, good people, that are no longer working at the city, you know, 10 years ago. Grant utilization, this is a great tool. Grants are good, but there's always, I kind of say some catches or hooks to them. We've had Jill Martin at our fire department write some grants, work on safer grants, which we'll talk about a little bit tonight. We've applied for other grants, I remember when I was on council, we had some cops grants. But there's always a match and a hook. You have to keep them so long, you have to match it so much with city funds. So they're good to an extent, but you just want to make sure that you know all the commitments that you're making as a community to do it. We're looking at one, I talked about one earlier today, we had a lunch meeting, and a question came up from a resident about the CSX tracks. So Kevin, I told him about what we were trying to do. We got a SNCOG $60,000 grant to come up with a design, so now we can, we'll try to be able to go out and know what we're asking funding for, to try to get some kind of an overpass on those tracks. Going to be a battle, but at least we have the money to know what we're asking for. Foundations, that's another unique sol. We had a great event last week, we have three foundations, one for the senior center, one for the downtown area, and one for public safety. Thursday, this guy did a great job, we had police there, JD had his crew, we had airport there, a lot of you in this room were there. And so what is a foundation? This foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So it's separate, it's not, I'm not on it, there are business people on it, residents, people from that field that are on it, and they have a board of directors, and then they have trustees, they raise money. Individuals can write checks, businesses can write checks, and now it's a tax write-off, because of 501(c)(3). Money goes to the foundation, the foundation board can then buy equipment, they can buy fire equipment, police equipment, and then they can donate it to the city. So it's a great, another way to just get, kind of get your community involved from a corporate standpoint, and surrounding corporations, to help us fund these essential services. We had a great kickoff, we're hoping that's really going to go well. I mean, I don't know all the totals yet, we hope to, but this one, long-term legacy costs, when I came into office, we had $100 million in legacy cost for retirees, retiree healthcare, pensions, I mean, definitely one of the things that keeps me up at night. We put together two different early buyouts of retiree healthcare, came to $25 million we shaved off in the last couple of years. That's huge. Still have things to work on, we still have a lot of work to do, but we were able to do that and lessen that big long-term legacy cost. Those were agreements that were made with employees way before me, way before the electeds that are here. Mutual aid agreements, I call this one kind of being neighborly. It's really just, you know, we had a lunch meeting today with Minister Alliance, and I said, you know, it's really being neighborly to the person next to you. So in our case, it's Bamburra, and Belleville, Huron, you know, Taylor, Wayne, Westland, but also the airport, right? They're right in the middle. And so we now have this auto with agreement with the airport, which is they have their own police and fire department. And so they really kind of did their own thing, and we did our thing, own thing, didn't we, for police and fire? I mean, they really didn't interact a lot. So now we have an auto with agreement, where they actually, if we have a structured fire in a city of Romulans, they run automatically. So I've had a lot of people say, wow, I saw airport fire coming down my street. And actually, we had a false alarm, I think over in your neighborhood, not until someone was burning in the backyard, they were on the way, okay? So that never happened before. Now, those agreements have to reciprocate, just like being neighborly, right? Neighbors look out for one another. You look out for your neighbor, your neighbor looks out for you. So when they have issues, maybe with an airplane that has some morning lights coming on, and you know, we'll back them up, arts, we'll stage for them, so that now if they need help, we're there to help them. So, you know, that's important, because if we wind up having to limit some of our services, I'm afraid some of those agreements will go away. So employee committee and cost savings, that's one of the most important, it's the last one here, but I'm a true believer that your frontline employees typically know where costs can be cut, where the waste is, where the fat is, where the good ideas for efficiencies are, how we can make things better, quicker, faster. And so we've got a regular committee going on that was involved in the past, we reactivated it, they've got some good ideas, but here's the deal, all these things, and those are all good things, that doesn't solve the problem, okay? That helps, we need to continue to keep doing those, but that doesn't solve the problem. One thing I'm very proud of, and you know, city council members that are here know, is that when I present my budget to city council, and they vote on it and approve it, I don't come back. You know, I've underspent the budget, what they legally allowed me to spend five years in a row. I just think that's good common sense. You know, just because it's in the budget, doesn't mean you have to spend it. And so I think again, fiscal spending makes sense too, just don't spend it. We go through a real tough process, Tina, you sat in on it last year. We start in GAT work, we're having sit downs with departments, and we talk about truly needs and wants. And I know the directors that are in here will attest to that, because we really pare it down. We start, and we work it down to, okay, what do you really have to have? And we include those things. But we're underspending it, and again, I think that needs to continue to happen. That's not something you just do every once in a while, that's a good practice. Here's where the proposal comes in. So the sol that we're putting out, and the solution where I need your help, that I can't fix, council can't fix, nobody can fix but the voters, is what we call the sustainability plan, which is really important, because I don't want to oversell this, is that we're going to enhance everything. This is to sustain, there's some areas we can make some improvements, but overall, I would say, think of it as a sustainability plan. It's a four mills for five years. This will generate an additional $2.9 million on an annual basis, only in capital letters, for fire and police services. Not for the mayor's office, not for, you know, the treasurer's office, not for council. By law, has to be used for police and fire. We'll have a separate line item in the budget, a separate GL account, where it'll be tracked and monitored and transparent for anybody that wants to see it. And that will happen. As I said at lunch, I don't look good in orange. Wayne County has kind of, this slide is really saying, this is unique to us. So what the state has done, when they held back revenue sharing, they didn't just hurt Romulans, they hurt all the communities. So what they're forcing everybody to do is fund it with special millages for these other services. So look at, there's 43 communities in Wayne County. And all these communities have had to do multiple public safety type village variations. Livonia, they have three different ones. They have a police, a fire, and a public safety, to fund their extra services, their essential services. In August alone, the primary just this year, there were 89 new public safety millages. This is going on over the state. And guess what, if people want streets done right by, or recreation programs, or library enhancements, they have to do the same thing. State is not funding any of those programs. I get hit with that quite a lot. Well, what's going on, Mayor? Where's the state? We're the feds, how come they're not stepping in to help us? And not only they're not helping, in my opinion, my opinion only, that, you know, we're, the locals are in this trouble, because the state's a balancer budget on our back. And that's, that's my opinion. So here we are, here's the Wayne County shot, this again, came from our assessor. This is public information. Of the 43 communities in Wayne County, we are the second lowest city operating village of any city in Wayne County. That's pretty cool. That's a selling factor, when we're trying to get people to come in and open up businesses, and build rooftops, and expand in our community. Because what they get for, what they're paying, is a huge value. Now, actually, I'll take a shot at Livonia, I saw their mayor last night, and I always like to rub it in. He's got a general operating village, but what'd I say? He's got three other public safety related millages. He's got a road village, because Bob, we talked to him about theirs. They've got a recreation village, I think two, at least two library millages. So a little deceiving, but we're still the best value around. So, and I want to stay that way, I think that's important to have a unique advantage, so we can attract development. With the four-mill, five-year proposal that's up on the ballot in November, we're still in the top 10. And guess what? Even looking at somebody's others, Livonia, they're not even adding that onto theirs. So with ours included, we're still a good bargain. So we're really in a sense trying to get back to this revenue problem we had from back to '08, and try to put this in place to get us on par, to keep these services, and still be a very competitive community. Really important point, because when I'm talking, I'm talking about homes, right? We're talking, that's a lot of the discussion, when people, a lot of times, that's the biggest investment they have is their home, their land. 70% of this millage is going to be paid for by businesses. You know, they own more property, they pay more in proportion to the residential piece. So 2 million will come from the business side, less than a million will actually come from the residents. So what does that mean? And I'm a business person, I was a business person before I came and took this job. And I'm not anti-business. When I'm talking to business people, and I do business visits at least every other week, the businesses want us. You know what they say to me, and I don't think you guys here at Public Safety, they want a safe business, they want it safe for their employees, they want it safe for their customers, they want to keep and protect their investment. So, you know, it's not a bad thing, it's not like sticking it to the business, it's basically saying, they want to pay for that service. This kind of is the old, you know, thing of breaking it down to the lowest denominator. So think of the average, about 42 cents a day additional is what this will total. So we took that earlier chart, now we take these columns and we add the yellow. So remember, we talked about the overall average was, you know, 58,000 '08, 38,000 today, that's less they pay in tax. So with this four-mill proposal, it's going to add about $153 back to that. So my comment about kind of getting us back to '08, it's kind of what that's doing, is really, we're just trying to go back and dedicate funds, and have that bring us up to par with the fundings. These are the different neighborhoods, and this bottom point here, if someone in this room wants to know, well, you know, maybe you've got a rural piece of property, you've got more acreage, whatever it would be, you tell us your address, we'll have the assessor look up and tell you exactly to the penny what it'll impact you on your bill. If this passes in November, which I really hope and pray it does, we will be able to start levying it in July, we'll start being able to levy, so to hit our budget in July, when the summer tax bill comes in is when we'll collect. So we'll start a budgeting process in January, February, the money will be coming in in July, that'll allow us to sustain our services through the next fiscal year. So we're doing this issue, we really hammered hard on the revenue problem, the property tax problem, the revenue sharing, doing more with less, continuing to do that. And on top of that, to really kind of pile on, we've got this demand issue. So the demand, what's going on with demand is basically, just like as we grew from 1970 and needed to add police and fire services, we're getting new development. You know, we're getting new businesses, we're getting, we're already working on our 2020 census, right Jazz? So that increases demand. Amazon alone, I mean, just with that one, 1,600 jobs, I listen to my police and fire radio, we get calls there, you know? So it's good for jobs, but yes, we have to service it. So as that demand goes up, this is where I want to have Captain Monty come up and talk specifically about the police side, and what impact it makes, and then we can continue back and get in the fire.
Good afternoon, I want to thank you guys for coming to this town hall meeting tonight. I'm just going to talk a little bit about how this millage has propensity to affect the police department. I run the whole patrol of the police department, I'm responsible for all the uniform division of the PD. The mayor talked about increased demand, as you can see, our runs are up 17% between 2009 and 2017. That also corresponds with what the mayor was talking about with doing more with less. We also have a 25% less officers, detectives, investigators, officers on patrol during that same corresponding time period. If this millage goes through, we're going to be able to sustain our neighborhood patrols. I wish I could put a cop in every single neighborhood, but I can't do it. But we do have enough cops to at least to cover the city with what we need covered, as we are now. The millage would, as I talked about before, it would retain appropriate policing, appropriate staffing levels. Would I like to have more officers? Yes, I would love to put an officer in every single neighborhood in this city. I would love to go back to the community policing format we used to have in the 1990s. But unfortunately, times have changed, and we have to do more with less. We would continue to utilize our current outreach programs if this millage passes. Right now, we're fortunate enough to have SRO assigned in the schools, he handles a lot of juvenile issues. He's able to head off some issues before the juveniles become adults. It saves us a lot, and sometimes we see these kids turn in a completely separate direction, get on the right path as they become young adults. We do an ALICE program. We've trained the schools, we've trained some community members, we've trained some of the businesses in ALICE training. And ALICE training is essentially how a civilian should react to an active shooter situation. When that gunman goes in the school, that gunman goes in that building, the teachers, the administrators will know how to act, how to respond, and how to best protect our students in the city. Couple other things we've started recently with the mayor's office, and Chris Dunn is our neighborhood watch meetings. We did something unique, is we assigned the area officers to that specific neighborhood watch. So you're not going to get me as your neighborhood watch meeting, you're going to get the officer who's going to be answering your 911 call. So on your worst day, when you call 911, an officer's going to show up who you may have met before. And that face-to-face interaction is tremendous, because most of the time when we meet somebody, it's not under the best of occasions, so. Couple things about if this millage doesn't go through. Obviously, you can see, you know, there are, we may have layoffs, we may not be able to cover all the neighborhoods. Our response time right now, between priority runs, priority four runs, lower priority runs, is about nine minutes and 12 seconds. National average, what we shoot for is nine minutes. Reduced staffing, reduced neighborhood patrols have greatly reduced our response times. I'll talk real quick, a minute, I had experience yesterday, I had an immediate Wayne Police Department at 5:30 with the chief. I showed up at Wayne, I couldn't get in the door, it was locked, the police department was dark. I had to call the chief to find out what's going on. They lock their doors at 5 o'clock. You cannot go to the Wayne Police Department after 5 o'clock and make a police report. During the day, when you do make a police report, you do go to the police department, because Wayne will not come out for a property crime where there's no suspect. You make your report on a computer in the lobby. There's no face-to-face interaction with a police officer. I've been doing this for about 25 years, and that to me is not the way to conduct police. And I don't want to see this city end up locking our police department doors at 5 o'clock. Again, I just want to thank you for coming. With that, I'll turn over to the fire department.
Welcome everybody, I'm Lieutenant Feeder with the fire department. So just a little bit, our slides go back to 2009, but I'm kind of a slide that goes back to 1986, okay, when I became a paid-out call firefighter here. And as you can see, our runs are no different than a police. Our demand has gone up for our run volume too. So in 2009, we were averaging about 31, 80 a year for runs. That's medical responses, fire responses, down wires, car accidents. Anything that somebody called 911 and needed a fire ambulance, we responded. Last year, 2017, 5,014. So quite a bit of a jump for us. I go back to 1986, when we probably had about 750 fire EMS calls on fire department. And when I worked at Station 2, we had 23 in a month, that was a lot. Lieutenant Waitogo probably attested that when he got on. So 23 runs a month for one firehouse, we're running 23, sometimes on a shift, a 24-hour shift nowadays. As you can see, our number's over 5,000. So what a big change it's been in my career. And as a shift lieutenant, I worked yesterday, and I believe we had 19 calls in a 24-hour shift, and that was with five firefighters protecting the city. And one thing we were able to do yesterday is, we had five transports with our ambulance, and we actually went to St. Mary's, we went to Beaumont Dearborn, we went to Beaumont Taylor, we went to Beaumont Wayne and Beaumont Garden City, all with our fire rescue for our residents, because that's where they wanted to go. And so we gave them that service. Twice on those runs, the guys called me. Twice on those runs, the guys called me on the phone and said, "Hey, the resident wants to go to St. Mary's." I said, "So let's take them to St. Mary's. We'll cover the rest of the city with the three guys, we'll, we'll handle it." Okay? And that was the demand on those three guys to cover the rest of the runs, so those two guys can get back. But we handled it. And like the mayor said, we have Metro Airport, we have neighboring cities like Wayne, Westline, Eister Fire, Taylor Fire, that can also help us out on an EMS call or a fire call if we need be, okay? So you can see the big increase in calls. And I, I would guarantee this year, we're going to be way over 5,100. So we're going to keep going up because the demand is there. Our job has changed over the years, we just have a lot more traffic coming in. I was talking with the mayor earlier about things we don't have. I'm not one of those residents, and I'm going to be in the same boat you are, I have to pay it. And I don't mind paying it, because that means my value of my home's going up, my value of my city's going up. So if we get the village, obviously, we want to sustain what we have. And, you know, we talked about possibly opening a second station, increasing another rescue crew going to advance life support. So that's going to sustain our operational efficiency right now, okay? If the village passes, we can retain appropriate fire staffing to meet the needs of our residents. We're going to continue our outreach programs. We do a lot in the community. I'm in all the elementary schools next week, this fire safety week, I'll be beyond shift, plus moving to elementary schools to teach fire safety to all our kids. We have the festivals. If the village passes, we're going to try to prevent layoffs. Obviously, if it, if it does not pass, we could be faced with issues ourselves. And we don't really want to go back 10 years ago. We want to keep moving forward because our department's progressing as one of the leading departments in the area. When we go to ALS, we have an ambulance, we get a second ambulance, that's a better service that we can provide for our residents. Most of the time, we get on the scene and we would have to turn it over to a private ambulance. And the people you pay us, we'd rather take you. We'd rather give you that service instead of giving it to another ambulance company who's not, you know, dependent on the residents. And we're dependent on you. So we like to give you that top-notch service. And that's why we love to do the, the business of the fire service in our city. We don't want to delay response times, okay? The mayor talked earlier about, you know, one goal, you know, we just got a safer grant. That means we're getting like five free firefighters for a while, and that's big, okay? But that's not the solve, okay? We still need that village. And, and I think our, our director, you know, did the analogy of one plus one equals three, not two, because we need both of these pieces of pie to get to that third step. And basically, getting the village, getting the safer grant allows me as a shift leader, Mike, Whitogo's a shift leader, to have that extra vehicle too, that's big, okay? To have an extra truck with two guys to provide a third or fourth vehicle to our public is big. When we're running three or four runs in an hour sometimes. Sometimes we're getting back to back-to-back hauls, okay? So that's important for us. So like I said, the safer grant is big, the village is also big, and, and we need that because it's just a, a big demand. Our, our runs are going, it's great to have Amazon, and like the mayor said, we're running a couple runs probably a shift to Amazon. But that's just like any other business, we have a lot of traffic with the expressways, the roads, the airport, the hotels, people traveling in and out, all the big freight warehouses we have, there's workers here, so we get to run our residents and workers, okay? So we want to continue our path, obviously, we don't want to step backwards, we don't want to take the department back to where it used to be, because it's just been moving forward and forward and forward. And the more forward we move, the better service you get as a resident, and like the mayor said, it's probably the bigger bang for your buck. You can move to any city you want, your services may not be as well as they are here. I can have snowplow, I can have my sewer fixed when there's a main break, I got police and fire services. I can move into a country, I may not see a cop car come to my subdivision for eight weeks, I can see a cop car in my sub usually come around once a day, which is nice to see here in the city. And on both sides, you know, we don't want to lose that, so. Do you have any questions?
We'll come back, I'll hear a couple more of them to open it up for any of them. Give them a round of applause, thank you gentlemen. So we talked about the revenue drop, we talked about the fact that property taxes now, and what people are paying compared to 10 years ago is less, believe it or not. We talked about the revenue sharing, they just talked about the increase in demand, and all the other things we need to keep doing with grants and creative solves. I want to reiterate, these are only for, and here's what's going on, isn't it true today that people just don't trust government, right? I mean, that's a fact. So we know that, we know that this village can only be used for police and fire. I'll say it again, not for the mayor's office, not for the treasurer's office, the clerk's office, anywhere else, by law. It's written into the ballot proposal for that. Five years, and let's talk about that. What, we were admin, we looked and studied at Sterling Heights and Livonias, and who else did public safety and police and fire type millages? And we asked them, I mean, didn't we? You guys had them on a speakerphone, you had Livonia. Kraus, you had Sterling Heights on the phone, we looked at their stuff. They did seven years. You know, Livonia started with five, and then they were trying to get to 10. So here's what we felt, this five-year sunset gives us a chance to prove that what we're saying, the residents are going to get the bang for the buck. And what happens in five years? It's, it's dumb. We either have to have another vote, a renewal, and prove ourselves to the residents that that's, you know, a renewal that needs to be there, or a whole nother village, which would also have to be a vote. So this is not endless taxation, it's locked in, it's short. Five years is not a long timeframe. We talked, Sterling Heights, they wish they'd gone 10, didn't they? I mean, so, but we feel it's very reasonable to give us a chance to prove to you that you're going to get the value in the tax dollar. So, you know, and this is really, you know, to maintain in this sustainability plan, so we don't have to have reductions. When, when, we talked about all these things tonight, when you walk home and you're talking to your neighbor across the fence, or you're talking on the phone to a family member, a friend, or just another resident, really, I, I want you just to explain and encourage them to come out and get the facts, but it's a revenue problem. It's not a spending problem, I showed you that earlier. We're underspending the budget. But the revenue loss sits down from the taxable value and revenue sharing, and not going to come back on the taxable value until 2041, it's not going to fix itself. The revenue sharing, we're going to keep on, and I hope we can get some of that, but[1641.46]